Thank you for having me. I briefly will tell you a little bit about me. Of course, a lot of you I already know. I grew up in Reading, went to school here. Have one son who I'm about to be a grandma for the first time, so I'm so excited. It's like, yay! That's the high point of my year this year is getting to be a grandmama. So anyway, getting on with the politics. I'm fiscally conservative, I think most of you know that. I've helped bring in the costs of the city of Reading. I believe in transparency all the way and exposing whatever is out there to be exposed, if there is such a thing. And I believe in seeing how we can rebuild our public safety system back to what it was prior to the Great Recession. So I'm looking forward to doing that, hiring more police. We've already started doing that. We are about to open a new fire station too, which you've read in the paper. And no, the current council did not decide on the date of when that fire station would open. That's when the chief and the city manager figured out what date would work when we had the funds to do that. So, looking forward to doing that and looking forward to getting your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for coming here tonight to this, what I believe is a very important event. And it's important because you folks have a decision to make. You're gonna vote for two people out of the three that are up here. And the fact that you come and listen to those three people so you can make an informed decision is critical. So I applaud you for doing it and welcome the opportunity to speak. My name is Dick Dickerson. I have been on the Reading City Council for eight years, serving twice as mayor. Prior to that, I was in the state assembly for four years. And prior to that, I was on the county board of supervisors for five years. So I have a broad range of experience in local and state government. During that, those actually 17 years now, I think that I have demonstrated a great deal of leadership in a lot of areas. And I'm not just talking about every other Tuesday on the Diaz at City Hall. I'm talking about leadership with the Regional Transportation Planning Agency. My efforts there, for instance, have done a great deal towards expanding I-5. I hope you all, well, I know you all appreciate the fact that we now have three lanes instead of two both directions in I-5. That is due, a great deal to my lobbying with the California Transportation Commission and others. I've also, from the leadership perspective, led the charge to make the Regional Transportation Agency an independent agency to eliminate any possibilities of conflict of interest at that very important level. Also worked and urged that the cities within the county become members of the air pollution control district. So those are the kind of things I'm talking about. And just mention this casually, I have been elected as the state president of the California Association of Congresses of Government, councils of government, which deals principally with transportation and housing issues. So I think that sort of demonstrates some leadership that I'm proud of and I would hope that you consider that when you, excuse me, when you make your decision. We on the city council over the past few years have had a tough time. Revenues are down, demands for services are not down. We've had to take some tough votes in order to keep those services flowing. And I believe that to be the most important thing that a city council does, that is to make sure that on a daily basis, your lights come on, your trash gets hauled, your streets are patrolled. So we need to keep that up in the next four years also. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Gary Cad. I'm running for Reading City Council to protect our city's future. Our city, excuse me, back in '08, when these same two individuals and I ran in a bigger group, I was making the statement that the city of Reading was still in good shape, but we were headed downhill. And one of my opponents said, "No, Mr. Cad's wrong." Well, in retrospect, Mr. Cad was right. And we have a problem coming before us now that we're gonna have to really make some good, hard decisions in how we spend our money and how we save our money for this city. Now, some of these issues are not being developed by the city, some of these problems, I should say, are not being developed by the city. They're coming from the state. But it's still money that's going to affect us and what we do. Whether the state comes for money, the governor comes calling for money, whether it's CalPERS calling for money, which is going to happen, and it's gonna be rather a large chunk. So we need to be very particular in who we have on the council and what this person, these persons are going to do on the council. It's my contention, from going to 138 meetings in the last six years, city council meetings in the last six years, and I've missed just two of them. This doesn't mean that I just go to city council meetings. I go to RTPA meetings that Mr. Dickerson just mentioned. I go to several other meetings. I go over and I watch the county. I know a lot of folks really need to stop and realize that the county does things that greatly affect the city. And we need to be able to be aware of what's going on. Mr. Dickerson mentioned the air pollution board, of putting a member of the Reading City Council on the air pollution board. That was my urging, our urging, talking to the Reading City Manager, Mr. Kurt Starman. And that's where that idea came from, was that we need representation on that board from the city of Reading, because that board's gonna affect what happens to the city. So we need, we need to have people on the council that, and I'm not saying that I'm gonna fight with staff, but we need to ask more questions of staff. We don't take staff as status quo. We need to know the answers. Some of you folks know how involved I get with the different issues. I study an issue, I learn it inside out, and then I'll speak to the issue. If I don't know the particulars on the issue, I'm not gonna talk about it until I understand it. But there's water issues that are coming that are gonna greatly affect the city of Reading, greatly affect it. So we need to have a voice in what happens across town over on Court Street, as well as what happens on this city. So I wanna thank you again for allowing us to come and speak to you tonight, and I think this will be a rather interesting debate. Thank you.
So Mick with Arthur. Ms. MacArthur will go first with question number one. And you can address either one of the candidates or the same question to both of them.
Actually, to both of you. As mentioned in my intro, I am a community activist. I do a lot for a lot of different organizations. I'm a doer, I'm not just a sit on your keister and do nothing. Mr. Wally Hawes back there and I worked on the library. I've worked on the YMCA, the Meth Task Force, American Heart Association, American Cancer Society. I mean, there isn't much of an organization that I haven't been involved in in some way. Having been here all my life, I'm very committed to the community, so I know this is a long-winded question. But, for instance, this weekend, I was at Make-A-Wish, doing a function there, helping them. And then Saturday, I was at the community cleanup. So my question to you is, to you both, is besides your church, what nonprofits do you actually give your labor and energies to? We are all going to be, whichever one of us gets elected, or whichever two of us get elected, we'll be giving our devotion to the city of Reading in big time. And I can attest to that after the last four years. But besides that, what will you be doing for the rest of our community?
Thank you, Ms. MacArthur, for the question. And I'll be as brief as I possibly can. For the past three years, I've been the chairman of the Board of Directors of the Youth Violence Prevention Council. Some of you may be familiar with that and some of you are not. This is an organization that runs the peer court in Chasta County, where we take youths who have violated the law in one manner or another and have a process set up that gets them out of the court system and into the peer court, where they're able to, hopefully, they follow the process, remove their arrest record from their record, allowing them to go forward. I've served two times as the chairman of the United Way Campaign, we try to raise funds for those folks. I also am a member, as is Ms. MacArthur, the Reading Rotary. All the Rotary Clubs in the city of Reading do a great job. We like to think that ours does the best job in terms of doing things for the youth, are honored to youth, and just a variety of things, not only locally but internationally that help. And there are others, but I think that's a sufficient answer for now.
Well, I've been a member of the Enterprise School District Bond Oversight Committee for the last, I think it's four years. And in fact, they're just rotating out and gonna have new members. I think we have one more meeting. As far as the service clubs in Reading, I haven't been a member of any of their service clubs. I do know that my wife is a board member of Good News Rescue Mission, and we help out there when there's a time to help. But my biggest community help is studying the issues of what goes on, standing up before the city council or before the county board of supervisors with issues such as getting the board of supervisors to put their meeting videos online so that we can see them, so they're not captured up or nobody really gets to see what the board of supervisors does. And there's several other issues that come forward. But thank you.
Do you have rebuttal? Okay. So question number two will be Mr. Dickerson.
Okay, let me ask you a question of each, can I ask each individually at this point or one now and one later?
No, you can ask them the same question.
But if I don't wanna ask them the same question, I have a question for each one of them. Should I ask both of them now or one of them now?
It's up to you.
Well, I'll ask one of them now. I will ask this question of Mr. Cad. And this question would be, I'm throwing you a softball, a great big fat softball, I hope you appreciate that. What is your vision for Reading 20 years from now? And as a member of the council, what specific actions would you advocate to achieve those
What I view Reading in 20 years from now, I'd like to see Reading back as it was in '06 20 years from now. I'd like to see us be a robust community. I'd like to see our homes filled instead of the way they are now. I'd like to see REU have a commission. So we had citizens oversight of the commission, actual people in the community that have electrical background beyond a commission. It's been stated that even the council members at one of the meetings stated that they really don't have the expertise or the knowledge to really oversee Reading electric utility, and yet they are the oversight board. So I would like to see, I'd like to see Stillwater Business Park full. I mean, we've got so much money sitting out there over the years we've put into that, that it's about time we start getting some return from the profit. So my idea of Reading is to get us back and get us going again and get us a strong, robust economy.
I would ask a question then, if that's appropriate of Ms. MacArthur. Or were you talking rebuttal? I don't have to rebut that.
Well, no, it'd have to be the same question.
It has to be the same.
Right. You can come back in your next turn and ask Ms. MacArthur.
Well, what do you think, Missy?
Oh, of the same question.
Yeah, he says it has to be the same question.
Well, I mean, I, like Mr. Cad, I hope Reading is robust and going great guns. I hope we can attract some major manufacturers here, fill up Stillwater, get the economy back on track, have realignment solved, because that's a real issue right now with all the crime that's coming up. That's a big worry for me, at least. And have a healthy, happy community. I mean, 20 years from now, yeah. Actually, right now. I'd like it like right now.
I don't need, I don't need to rebut any of that.
Okay. We'll just go in order, Ms. MacArthur, Mr. Dickerson, Mr. Cad, to answer this question. Recently, the Reading City Council had the option of ending a policy of evicting people out of their homes, declaring the home unsafe, and turning them over to code enforcement. Do you agree or disagree with this policy? And why?
I actually voted to and agreed with the policy. And it turned out that of the whole eviction process, there were three evictions, and they were all foreclosures and bank-owned. So the reality is, there's a perception out there that people are being, you know, just randomly and almost uncaringly thrown out of their homes. That's not, it turns out, the case. Bank foreclosures that were empty, those were the ones.
Well, I fully support the policy for a variety of reasons. I know it sounds terrible that someone can actually be evicted because they don't have electric power. But the city of Reading and REU has to operate like a business. If a landlord, for instance, cannot evict someone for non-payment of rent, is that such a terrible thing? And if a bank cannot foreclose on a mortgage because people can't afford the payment, is that such a terrible policy? I don't think it is. I have asked repeatedly for a list of the folks who were actually evicted, driven from their home because their electricity was paid off, or not paid off. I have yet to receive a single name from anyone. It's just not good business to allow folks to occupy a residence without electric power.
It's been mentioned that a home without electricity, that somebody is using candles, is eminently unsafe. But a home that has electricity on and has candles in it is safe. See, I find a problem with that one, that analogy. The thing that, I'm not in favor of evicting people. Now, what is being said here is, there's been three people evicted. Why, if somebody had their electric service turned off, why would they stay in a home when they know that they're gonna get fined $2,500 a day? There's a fine that goes along with this. If the electricity goes off, somebody's going to move out. I wouldn't wanna stay in a home and know that the city was gonna come after me and fine me for staying there. I'd move out. So a lot of those folks move out and never gets to the eviction point. So there's a definite, we have a disagreement here, these two folks and myself have a disagreement on this issue. Thank you.
Any discussion?
Just a, just a quick comment relative to Mr. Cad's comment about the candles. I don't hold this position because I'm fearful of candles. I hold this position because I think a policy other than the one we have, a policy that says it's okay to occupy a residence that has no electricity, is a bad policy because it encourages folks to do that. And when you encourage folks to do that, you have more people living in their residences without electrical power, and something does happen, candles or anything else, the city can be liable, because by policy, the city has said it's okay for you to occupy that residence. And I think for the citizens and the taxpayers of Reading, who would have to suffer the financial setback from that kind of a situation, let alone the personal injuries and harm that could happen to somebody, is just not a good policy. And that's what we're talking about here, is a policy.
I have a question for both you folks. From January through June of 2011, the council voted to approve several employee contracts that were four years or longer in duration. There were employee concessions in the first two years, and then the city of Reading give-backs in the later years, or giving money back to them. How are you planning for the city to pay for these future employee contract increases when they come due?
Well, the same way we pay for them now. We went through a process called negotiation. The primary goal of the city of Reading during these negotiations was to reduce the costs of the taxpayers, of the pension programs, and the healthcare programs of the public employees. And I think that's important and it's worth doing. But when you sit down and negotiate with people, it's a matter of they give something, you give something. You take something, they take something. And in order to begin working on those high pension costs and those high medical costs, it was necessary to offer them something down the road. It would be wonderful if we could dictate what the conditions are gonna be. But state and federal law requires that we negotiate in good faith. And through the past years, we have done that. And I believe we will continue to do so.
Well, you probably remember that I was one of the people that helped write Measure A and Measure B. So I'm, being a fiscal conservative, I definitely wanted to rein in costs. Now, on the other hand, Mr. Dickerson is correct. When you're dealing with unions and bargaining units, you do have to negotiate. You can't just say, "This is the way it will be." Measure A, Measure B definitely gave us some teeth, so that we were able to come to the table in a much stronger position. I think that going forward, Mr. Cad does have a point about CalPERS. I think that's going to be an issue still. But in fact, we have, we have made big changes that are helping the city of Reading. And the city of Reading is fiscally, at this point, very stable, which is why we got the Standard and Poor's A rating. So I feel good about what we did with the bargaining units. And unbeknownst to you all, it came to a point where we almost, one of the bargaining units almost went out on strike.
At one of the meetings in June of 11, there was a statement made from the Diaz after they passed one of these union contracts, that we just hope the economy turns around by the time these contracts come due. So there is a payment down the road, and it's going to cost us money.
I'll move on to question number five, which will be the second question for Ms. MacArthur.
Okay, I'm starting to feel picked on here. I start every time. Dick says it's because I have broad shoulders.
No, go ahead. You're asked the second question.
Oh, I thought you were gonna ask me a question.
Oh, no, no.
That's why I was gonna.
I only asked the same to three of you, so you can't blame me for that.
Okay, all right, sorry. Okay, hold on, I have to get my glasses on. I know I wrote a question down here. Oh, yeah. Complete streets have been a priority for the current council. Every year or two, we do a priority-setting session. So my question to you two would be, would you continue making complete streets a priority? Why or why not? Mr. Cad?
Well, starting off, complete streets. Complete streets are an idea of having bike lanes on our streets. And I don't know if a lot of you have noticed lately, but there's some bike lanes that are out in the middle of the street, or there's a lane to the left of them. So you, like, you go across Cypress Street Bridge, if you wanna go into Hartnell, you pull over through the bike lane, stay in the bike lane, and then the bike lane proceeds up to the crosswalk of Hartnell and then ends. So where does the biker go from there? And these are starting to show up all over town, these are complete streets. To me, in watching what's going on and watching the bicyclists on these lanes, you have to be very careful. And I'm afraid we're gonna get somebody hurt with the setup such as it is right now.
Well, actually, complete streets include more than bike lanes. You want the ability for pedestrian traffic, bicycle traffic, and vehicle traffic of all kinds. So it's a design issue. When, if you were starting out with a city that had no streets, you could design these very easily and very quickly and very safely. When you're starting out with a community that already has an existing streets and all, you have to make some adjustments to make this happen. And you will have occasionally some situations such as Mr. Cad described. But that does not mean that the idea of having streets available for more than vehicle traffic is a bad idea. So I think it's a positive thing for this community and any other community, and I'll continue to support it.
So Mr. Dickerson will support it and Mr. Cad would not support?
Okay. The Northern California Veterans Museum and Heritage Center requested funding for the purchase and installation of a new flagpole, an American flag, to be placed in front of the Reading Library. The city of Reading declined to fund the flagpole estimated to cost $7,000. Please explain your position on this issue.
Well, my position on this issue, the city should put it up. The flagpole should have been put in when the library was completed. The city has the library, the people come forward, the veterans come forward and asking to have a flag put up. It's gonna cost $7,000. Only $7,000 is all this gonna cost. Council said no. It was talked about the pinching pennies. But why does it seem that we give union contracts that are gonna cost us money down the road, that the only place we pinch pennies is when we, the people, go and ask the city to do something for us, to put a flag up? It seems like there's a really problem with this. There shouldn't have been no problem at all to take $7,000 and put up the flagpole and have it done.
The responsibility for, actual, original responsibility for the construction and development of the Reading Library was with the county. For some reason, the county did not include the flagpole. So now, some years later, we're trying to make that happen. At the same council meeting where $7,000 or $8,000, I think it was closer to $8,000, but what it, doesn't matter, was asked for, the same organization asked for $190,000. So it wasn't a decision just based merely on the flag issue. The council, including myself and Ms. MacArthur, voted to give the veterans $190,000 for that museum. So it's not a question of either one of us being opposed to the veterans or opposed to what you folks say. We will get a flag on the library through some fundraising efforts without costing the taxpayers the money to do so.
Actually, Mr. Dickerson and I committed that night to finding the funding, and I've subsequently met with some folks on this issue. I've solicited a service club for some funding that might or might not pan out. But I told the three women that I've been, that I met with, that I'm involved, that are really working on this issue, that probably it'd be a little bit of a delay till November 6th, just because we're a little bit busy right now. But we have committed to making, to putting a flag there, just not through the city taxpayers.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Number seven will be Mr. Dickerson's question number two. Same question to both candidates, if you choose to.
Okay, I do have a question I would like to ask Mr. Cad. Mr. Cad, could you tell us two critical issues that are currently facing the city? And how, if you were on the council, you would deal with them?
Critical issue? The city asked me here a few months ago to be a member of the City Streets and Roads Workshop. And as you can see, our city streets and roads are in pretty bad shape. One of the reasons for that is, is there's been money taken out of the streets and roads and put into the general fund in the last three years. Started out at $4.1 million, they're down to under $2 million now. The city's doing a real good job. They've got a team together, and they're really come up with a new product to seal the streets. And it's moving forward, I think, that... You wanted two things, Mr. Dickerson? Two. And the second one, I believe, again, is going to be the Reading Electric Utility Commission because we're going to solve a lot of problems that we see with electric utility when we have a commission in place. Thank you.
That was just to Mr. Cad? And you don't have a rebuttal? Okay. So, question number eight will be Mr. Cad's question number two.
Okay, Mr. Cad's question number two. Mr. Dickerson, this morning on Free Fire Radio, you mentioned that the city's sales tax receipts are improving. Would you comment on this issue?
Gary owed me that softball. I gave him two. He's got to give me at least one. Yes, a couple of things that are important to folks relative to the economy and the revenues that are flowing into this, not flowing, seeping into the city at this time. We do quarter-by-quarter comparisons. And the quarter, the most recent quarter completed in 2012 compared to 2011, the sales tax revenue are up about 9.5%. That indicates some stirring out there in the economy. You folks are out there spending more money on taxable items, and that's very helpful. The downside of it is that property taxes are stagnant because our property values are stagnant. So, the revenue that flows to the city normally from property taxes is greatly reduced. So, going forward, while there are some bright spots out there, we can never lose sight of the fact that we have more difficult times ahead. And as we have, I'm going, now I know I could ignore her. We have more difficult times ahead as we go forward. And I think that is one reason why you need folks on the city council who are experienced and who have shown leadership, who helped get us through the last four years. You know, when I first joined the city council in 2005, a year later, the economy started the downturn. And we began immediately to put steps in effect that were going to protect us, this city. That is one of the reasons why Standard and Poor's, as Ms. MacArthur mentioned earlier, which is a bond rating organization, examined Reading's fiscal plan, gave us an A rating on our bonded debt, and said that the financial situation in the City of Reading is very stable. And I think that's something that shows an accomplishment of the folks that have been helping to guide the city over the past four years.
Mr. Cad, you did ask both, right? Okay.
I was so interested in the answer, I forgot the question.
The sales tax receipts.
Oh, right.
I actually, I'm sorry, I actually just asked that of Mr. Dickerson. I didn't ask it of Missy. So, you can ask if you want to, but...
Yeah, well, sales tax revenues are up a bit, and we're happy about that. TOT, which is transient occupancy tax, is heads in the bed in the hotels. That's up. And our cash reserves in '09 were $4 million, and today, in 2012, projected to be $5.2 million. Now, that means that we did a lot of haircuts. We furloughed people, we laid people off, we closed the fire station, we made tough decisions. It wasn't easy, and we got a lot of blowback. But as a result, Reading isn't facing bankruptcy like Stockton or other cities. So, yeah, I agree with Mr. Dickerson. This council's done pretty darn good by the citizens of Reading in keeping us financially stable.
Real quick, been meeting with the city manager, Kurt Starman, off and on for the last six, eight months. We just had a meeting again last Wednesday. The City of Reading does have an increase of sales tax, 9%. But what we need to do is figure out what sector that sales tax is coming from. The sectors, there's only two sectors that are improving. And this isn't improvement over last year, which is a far cry from going back to '10, '09, going back. But the two sectors are automobile sales and fuel sales, because our fuel is sky-high. So, when you top and look at the sectors of the city, the city's not really moving. We're staying at a status quo position. So, we're not really quite as well-off as one might think we are. I mean, you can take their answer, and we do have some sales tax coming in, but we've got to watch where that sales tax is coming from before we can start planning on an increase.
Gary, I'm sorry, I heard you talk about the autos, but what was the second sector that you said?
Fuel.
Fuel. Thank you.
I thought you guys were going to respond. No more discussion? Okay, this is my third question, and depends on what happens here, I might get a chance to ask another one. So, question number three. Privatization of the convention center seems to be going very well. Why do you think a private firm made this venue successful while the city-run operation could not? And we'll go, I think we'll start with Mr. Dickerson, then Ms. MacArthur, and then Mr. Cad.
Well, I believe basically it's a matter of, when the city was operating the convention center, that was under the management of the Community Services Director, who has multiple other responsibilities. And to the degree that she could, I think she worked on those convention center issues. However, when we turned it over to the private entity, that's all they do. We chose them because they had the ability, the financial wherewithal, and the contacts within the entertainment industry to bring things to the convention center. So, that's one area of privatization that really worked well. I don't fault the city staff for not being promoters on the par of the folks that are running it now. But I think what we should do is be glad that things are going so well, without trying to look back and say, "The city must have been messing it up because it's going okay
Government runs a city. Government shouldn't be in business. The reason that the convention center is going the way it is now is because they've got the talented people in that particular sector that can run the convention center. Not going to say anything about the folks that were running it for the city before. I don't want to bring them into the equation. But the private sector runs business. Government is not good at running business. It's proven that to us over and over and over again. It never has, never will. This is the reason why. It was really not surprising to think that this was going to happen, the convention center, when a private individual, a private company, private, the church, the Bethel Church, came forward and started running it. They've done a magnificent job. I don't know if you've been inside and seen the inside of it, but it's really pretty. So, government needs to do government, and private sector will do business.
So, they have less expenses. I mean, they utilize volunteers a lot, and their overhead's less, so they're doing well. And we're really pleased that they're doing well, because it was a million dollar, it was going to cost us a million bucks for the city, for the taxpayers, to keep that open if we wanted to do that. And also, now, the repairs are going. So, we had a big backlog of repairs for that building, so I'm very pleased with how it is. And more power to them. Yay.
Any further discussion? Give me a second to decide here. Okay, I guess we'll just follow on that. The short 30-second answer. If there were other entities in the City of Reading that you could privatize, what would they be? And we'll begin with, go ahead, Mr. Dickerson, and then Missy, and then Mr. Cad.
I'm in it...
Is this who you want a 30-second? Well, let's go ahead and go a minute.
30 seconds is fine. I am willing to look at privatizing almost anything if it can be demonstrated that the same quality of services can be provided for the citizens of Reading at a lesser cost so that we can save money. So, we have looked at privatization for the past five years. We've had studies, and we've done this. We've asked for proposals. And for the most part, it just doesn't come in where it's going to provide the same services and save us any money.
We did have a privatization committee that we looked at. Fire, what else did we look at? Well, there were like, Gary, do you remember what we looked at? I mean, fire, electric, what else? See, this, this is, you've got all of us up here that are over 55, a little more maybe. Parks and Recs, right. So, anyway, bottom line is, we looked at different entities about privatization, and we came to the conclusion that basically what we had was working better than if we privatized it all. For instance, if we privatized parks and rec, and we put out of, say, a five-year proposal, and they took over all of our equipment, we realized that at the end of the five years, the lawns might have looked great and so forth, but all of our equipment might have been destroyed. So, that at the end of the contract, we could have all of our big, heavy-duty equipment trashed at the end of the contract, and then it turns, it would turn out that we, in fact, did not save money. So, we kind of looked at all these different considerations and evaluated it. And there were, I think, 10 people on the privatization committee, all the council members, and then one appointee each. So, it was quite a big study, and we looked at quite a few things, and came to the conclusion that the things we were looking at, at least, wouldn't be privatized at that time. But we're always open to it. I mean, wherever I can save a dollar, I will.
You know, the previous question brings something to mind. The convention center was privatized. Seems to be working. City's going to get $1.4 million to start repairing on the convention center. So, we've tried a privatizing project, and it's working. So, if we tried a privatizing contract, situation, and it's working, why don't we look at doing more privatizing? Why don't we just look into it more? We can't just say we had a committee, and the committee decided not to do this. It's already worked once, and it's a jewel, really worked well. So, why don't we continue trying to see on other areas? Thank you.
Mr. Moderator, could I comment to Gary's comment just very quickly? Studying privatization opportunities is non-stop. Just because we don't have a standing committee to do that kind of work doesn't mean we're not doing it. We're constantly looking for ways to improve service and reduce costs through privatization, and we'll continue to do that.
Okay, we'll move into the closing statements after Elizabeth gives you your float time.
The total, including your existing float time and your closing statement. So, Missy, you will have 6 minutes and 30 seconds. Mr. Dickerson, you will have 3 minutes. And Mr. Cad, you will have 5 minutes and 30 seconds.
And we'll do it in this order. Mr. Dickerson will go first, Ms. MacArthur will go second, and Mr. Cad will go third.
Well, I would just like to say that I basically stand on my record as an incumbent running for another term on the city council, and I covered that to some degree in my opening statement. But let me tell you something that always concerns me a little bit. And that is frequently, we have folks come before the city council and ask us to do something, this, that, or the other. And then, when that doesn't happen, we get accused of never listening to the people. Let me give you a quick little list of all the things that have happened in this community over the past few years that were done at the request of the citizens. The Sundial Bridge was a community project that was approved by the City of Reading. The library, our participation in the library was brought to us by people from the community. The soccer park, those folks in the community who like to play soccer and have their kids play soccer lobbied very hard for that. We had the 10-in-10 program in 2010 that the chamber advocated that we do. We did that absolutely. Folks came before us and said, "We want to study the possibility of a charter city, and we would like to have a committee to do that." We did that. The same folks advocated that we put that on television, televise those meetings. We did that. Few years ago, we had a proposal to move Lithia Chevrolet out to airport. Large U and cry about not doing that. We didn't do that. There was a horse park proposed in the past that would, I believe, have been beneficial for the City of Reading, but a lot of people come up and said, "Don't do that." We didn't do that. The Veterans Museum out at the airport, folks came forward, wanted to do that, asked the city, could they have the land to do that? We gave them the land to do that. They later come up, just very recently, and said, "We need some more taxpayers' money to make that happen." And we gave them that, that money. The Turtle Bay Museum is a project that was advocated by the citizens of this community a long time ago. And recently, the most recent thing we had was folks coming forward and saying, "If you can reduce the fees on traffic impacts and wastewater, we can build more houses in the City of Reading." And we did that. So, we do listen to folks. We do try to do what you folks ask to do. That doesn't mean that we agree with you absolutely every time you ask for something. We listen, or at least I listen to you sometimes... We listen, or at least I listen to you, sometimes I agree with you, and sometimes I don't. But I would certainly appreciate your support on November 6th. I will continue to be committed to running this city in such a way as that you get the services that you pay for and that you need for your everyday lives. So thank you.
Well, first of all, I want to thank you for putting up with us tonight. I hope that we've answered your questions, all of us have. I'd like to, got a little bit of time here, I'd like to, again, reiterate, I want to be on the council. I'm seeking a seat on the council to protect Reading's future in these challenging economic times. We're going to have problems with water. The state has passed something called SBX 77. Somebody of you heard me speak of this before. What basically is going to happen is by 2015, we have to reduce our water usage by 10%. And then by 2020, we have to reduce an additional 10% for a total of 20%. The county is involved with something called Integrated Regional Water Management. Ms. MacArthur is a, I want to say a substitute, alternate on that board. I've been following it. There's some real problems there. The air quality with the climate action plan is not just with the county. It's going to be with the three cities also, so we have an issue there to work on. We have an issue of contracts coming forward, contracts coming forward in, oh, three or four years from now. So we have a lot of problems, so we need people on the council that are going to represent you folks, the people. When you folks elect Gary Cad to the Reading City Council, I'm not going to be a city councilman. I'm going to be one of you that sits on the city council, that represents the people, that represents all of us. This is what we have to have. We have to get back to where the people, and I shouldn't be pointing, excuse me, but we have to get back to where the people are in government, to where we represent the people. And I truly believe this, I think some of you know that, because for the last four or five years, I've been bending your ear on the different issues that have come before us. But I, in my heart, truly believe that I can do the job. I've attended, like I said, 138 meetings and missed just two in six years of the city council meetings, not to mention all the other meetings and the committees, the REU Review Committee, the Traffic Impact View Committee, I'm on the work group now that they asked me to be on, and I'm glad I'm there. And one of the reasons I'm learning something while I'm on there and helping make decisions. So it helps brain things forward. And when you vote, starting a couple of days from, let's see, today's Monday, probably Wednesday, you'll start, if you're a mail ballot, you'll get your ballot probably Wednesday or Thursday. I would ask that you would consider marking Gary Cad on that ballot. And I thank you very much for your time.
Let's give them a big round of applause.
So, basically, I think that you have a picture of me. You understand that I'm fiscally conservative, that I'm very involved in the community, I care deeply about the community. And is that a phone, or is that this?
Phone.
Oh, okay. So, and I intend to continue to care for this community and do everything I can do to make it as successful in the North State as it can be and be a leader in the North State. I think that we have the best people. I get my mail at the post office, and I can tell you that people are so nice. They, this sounds silly, but they hold the door for you. They say, "Thank you," when you hold the door, or they say, "You're welcome," instead of "No problem." And it's just so refreshing to see how wonderful our citizens are. And when somebody has a tragedy, our community reaches out to them and helps them. So I'm really proud to be a part of our community, and I'm proud to be your city council person. And I hope that you'll support me to continue doing everything I can do to make this a wonderful place for all of us. Thanks.